We're gonna go ahead and start. This is our Danville City Commission, a regular meeting. Today it's Monday, September 11th, 2023. We're gonna have a 9/11 prayer by Commissioner Cottle, and then we have a special guest, Brooklyn Staiton? Staiton? What's your last name? Staiton, okay. Little Miss Kentucky, and she's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag this afternoon. So, Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a prayer that a lot of you have already heard it, but it's a prayer my mother wrote back on September 22nd, 2001, just in lieu of everything that happened. And it says, "Greater love hath no man than this that he lay down his life for another," from John 15:13. There are those who tear down, and those who build up. There are those who hurt and those who help. There are those who spread hate and those who seek to soothe. There are those who worship self and those who care for others. The heroes we salute tonight are builders and helpers and soothers, and above all, caring humans who gave their lives in the performance of their duty to their fellow citizens. Let us pay tribute to these brave men and women in ways that are meaningful and lasting. Let each of us resolve to do at least one kindness each day so that when we are through waving flags, we won't be through reaching out to each other in love and understanding and brotherhood. God bless these fallen heroes, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. And in honor of that, we'd like to take a moment of silence to reflect back upon October the 11th, 2021. And it really slapped me in the face today. I was in Center College, and I started talking about 22 years ago, and none of the students at Center College, except for the seniors, are 22 years old. And that just really, think about it. All of our kids, preschool through seniors in college, were not alive when this event happened. So if that doesn't make you understand the importance of it, well, it does. So a moment, please. Thank you. All right, Ms. Brooklyn. Do your thing, young lady. Salute? Oh, yeah. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna modify our agenda. We have a proclamation in honor of little Mr. and Mrs. Kentucky, and Commissioner Peak's gonna read that to us.
Whereas Hudson James Middleton and Brooklyn Sophia Staiton competed in the Danville-Bull County Fair Little Mr. and Miss Bull County Competition in the summer of 2023. And whereas Hudson James Middleton and Brooklyn Sophia Staiton won the titles of Little Mr. and Miss Danville-Bull County and represented the city of Danville in the Little Mr. and Miss Competition. And whereas Hudson James Middleton and Brooklyn Sophia Staiton competed against 67 other entries for the title of Little Mr. and Miss Kentucky at the Kentucky State Fair on August 17th, 2023. And whereas Hudson James Middleton and Brooklyn Sophia Staiton won the titles of Little Mr. and Miss Kentucky and are the second state pageant winners from Danville-Bull County in the history of the pageant, which began in 1982. And whereas Hudson James Middleton and Brooklyn Sophia Staiton will represent the city of Danville and Bull County throughout the state at different events during 2023, 2024, and are role models for the youth of Danville-Bull County, they are to be commended on their accomplishments. Now therefore, Mayor J.A. Chatkins and the city commissioners of the city of Danville on this 11th day of September 2023 do hereby recognize and congratulate Hudson James Middleton and Brooklyn Sophia Staiton, and encourage the citizens of Danville to congratulate them on their success and representation of Danville, Kentucky.
Thank you, ma'am. She's 66 years old, guys. How about that? Wow. Well, stand up so they can see you. Everybody steps, all right? And we have a little token of appreciation for you, and it's key to the city of Danville. It represents a little Miss Kentucky. Why don't you come up and take a picture with us? It's a missus, you all have to come up and take a picture. We gotta, quick.
And this is Shawna. She is with the fair. She is over the pageant, so she's here too.
It's always nice to be to recognize our young folks, especially when they're doing something good. You know, if they're doing something bad, we definitely hear about it, but we wanna celebrate the good as well. So thank you, Brittany, for stopping by to spend some time with us today, and thank your family for bringing you. Okay, Commissioners, you've had the agenda since last Friday. I'd like to get you to approve the agenda this afternoon with one deletion. We're gonna not do item number 13 tonight, the engineering report. Our city engineers under the weather with some medical issues. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So there's no, there's no city manager report, right? Okay, okay. Thank you.
We don't have a full-time city engineer yet. He's not returned back to work full-time. He is present tonight, okay? So is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. First item on our agenda is to hear the public. We invite citizens to attend our meetings, and we invite you all to participate. And you can raise your hand, be recognized, and you may talk to us at this time for three minutes or less. And the items have to be a conversation about items that are on the agenda. I shouldn't say a conversation. You get to speak to us, and we'll just listen to you. But is there anyone from here the public about items that are on our agenda tonight? Yes, sir.
Mr. Daniel Glacken with Ambits, Post 123. We're second vice commander and chaplain. So for item number four, the general banner request, we're requesting to put up a banner promoting the Ambits Car and Bike Show on September 30th. If we can start that maybe next Sunday, this coming up Sunday, run it through the 29th, and then we'll move it over to the Millennium Park.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna call you back up when we get to that item, though. Since you're on the agenda, you'll do your presentation at that time.
Oh.
Okay. That's all right. No, that's all right. Thank you. Anyone else on, for here the public, would like to talk to us about items on the agenda? Seeing none, let's move right along then. We read it then, number one, that was the proclamation for Mr. and Mrs. Kentucky, 2023.
We do need to vote on that, though, Mayor.
Oh, thank you, sir. All right. So the chair will entertain a motion to accept the proclamation, approve the proclamation for little Mr. and Mrs. Kentucky.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? Congratulations again. All those in favor of accepting this proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is National Hispanic Heritage Month. We have a proclamation. Mrs., is it Clont? Make sure I said it right. You can come on up, and we'll read the proclamation first, and then we'll let you talk to us a little bit about what's going on. Commissioner Siri?
Yep. Welcome. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th each year by recognizing the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas September 15th is significant as the starting date for Latino Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16th and September 18th. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos have and continue to serve as civil rights leaders, educators, public servants, business owners, activists, artists, colleagues, friends, and much more in our community and across the world. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos continue to enrich our nation's character and affirm the narrative of American unity and progress. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate Hispanic culture, honor the invaluable ways Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our common goals and work toward a stronger and more inclusive society for all. Now therefore, Mayor J.A. Chatkins and the Board of Commissioners of the city of Danville do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month and urge all citizens to recognize the significance of Hispanic heritage and history in our nation and city.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Clont, you wanna make a presentation before we entertain a motion?
I'd like to introduce some of the girls at Centro Latino.
Hi, I'm Gloria. I'm a student at Center College, and I work with the summer program for the kids, and then I also help with medical cards.
My name is Stephanie. I work with Centro Latino, answering the phones and help the Hispanic community get access to hair care.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. Commissioners, thank you very much for having us. Centro Latino understands that the Hispanic community is vital to the workforce in Danville and surrounding counties. They are what was present during COVID. When other people were home getting unemployment, these people continued the boat afloat. So with that being said, our primary job is to assist these individuals with academic resources, educational resources, and that's some of what these girls do, tutoring and summer programs at Center College. We also help with access to health care. We believe that if the Latino community is healthy, the rest of Danville Boyle will be healthy as well because they work in these restaurants, because they work in the hospitality area. We currently partner with the University of Kentucky in programs to prevent a type 2 diabetes, cardiovascular disease, high blood pressure, some of those more chronic diseases. Many of these people do not have Medicaid. So we work with clinics to make sure that they can get the prescriptions and have access to this health care. We also work with the University of Kentucky to make sure that we have access to vaccines. We will have a health fair on November 18th at the U.K. Extension Office. That is from, I believe it's from 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock. And we, again, it's a health fair, and we will be promoting the new vaccine, flu vaccines. We will also be working with the job fair with economic development. Unfortunately, that time between 10 and 2 is not a good time for most Latinos. If they already have a job, they're loyal, so they're not gonna leave one job, you know, kind of lose that job to go find another. And lastly, we are collaborating with the IRS in an effort to get the economy back on track. So the IRS is asking us to help them with individuals who do not have a social security number to get a tax identification number so they're able to do their taxes. With that being said, one of the biggest problems that the Latino community has right now in the state of Kentucky is that if they do not have a social security number, they are not allowed to register their vehicles in the whole state of Kentucky. So you can imagine how much revenue we are losing if these people cannot register their vehicles. So you see, the state of Kentucky is kind of discouraging ITIN numbers, and the feds are encouraging the ITIN numbers. So here we are trying to bridge that gap and try and benefit both sides.
That's interesting. Well, well, thank you for that update. Commissioners, any questions or comments? You wanna present the flag?
Yeah, just thank you, such a growing need, and thank you for helping our community.
Why don't we, why don't we do the motion and stuff, and then we'll go down and present the flag and take a picture?
I'll move to approve the proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second, ma'am. Thank you, sir. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know if you knew that or not, but I was honored to read that proclamation since my last name has Spanish roots.
Ah, all right. I did not know that, but, you know, you can teach me something new every day, right? I'm still open. Thank you. Well, let's move along then. Next on our agenda is an energy update from Atmos. Mr. Jimmy Smith is here to do that update. How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you, Mayor?
Pretty good, pretty good. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for having me today. I'm Jimmy Dell Smith. For the ones of you that don't know me, I've been with Atmos Energy for 28 years now. Started at the bottom, worked my way up to where I am today. I'm the operations supervisor in this district for Atmos Energy. Atmos' vision is to be the safest provider of natural gas services. And with that vision, we have a lot of old pipe that's in the ground, and we need to prepare for our future with that. Some of you were here a couple of years ago when I presented it, and some of you are new. But the PSC mandated us to have all this work complete by 2028, and the majority of the work that we have left is here in Danville. We have a lot of pipe that was put in the ground here in Danville in the '40s. Nothing's wrong with the pipe. It's just old. It's time to take care. Like I said, Atmos wants to be the safest provider of natural gas services, and the way of doing that is upgrading our facilities. We also take pride in having exceptional customer service. And with that, you know, we know that the customers are what determines our business, and so we wanna serve them exceptionally well in doing that. Team construction has been with us since the beginning, since 2010, when these projects began, and I think that speaks volumes about the quality of the work that they do. And so kind of just an update, and that's what I'm here for. And any questions? In your all's brochure packet, of course, there's my business card with my number on it, stuff that I can be reached 24/7. It goes for all my employees and everything also, too. Whether I'm on vacation or no matter where I am, that phone stays with me. But as far as an update, so so far to date in Danville, we've replaced 16,000 feet of main line pipe and 180 services. This is at no cost to anybody. Atmos is absorbing this cost. We go out, we're replacing the lines. We're replacing the main. We're replacing the line from the main to the houses. We're replacing the meters at the house. And any house piping that we have to move on the customer's house is absorbed by us. The customer is never at any cost. If we find a leak in their house piping while we're there, we do our best to resolve that and also fix that as a safety precaution while we're there. In the packets I gave you is just kind of a list of what we plan on doing for 2024. Locust Street, and there's a map of the streets that are gonna be involved there, Caldwell, Hudson, and all the way out to East Lexington. So there'll be approximately 2,900 feet of 2-inch main replaced, 850-foot, a 4-inch main replaced, and 88 houses be affected. The West Walnut Street project really doesn't affect anybody other than the railroad and seller's engineering. All of these, the Locust Street job will start October 1st. The West Walnut Street job, we're still not for certain on because we have to get a federal permit to board the railroad. So that has been in the works for about four months now and probably still a couple of months out from finalizing. The last project there will be Alton Road out off North Main, and you can see that's gonna be the biggest project of the year with 5,800 feet of 2-inch pipe, 1,779 feet of 4-inch pipe, and 140 services will be replaced in that timeline. This is a good thing. We've not really had any issues that I'm aware of that we haven't taken care of. I know I work with Mr. Coffey and Josh, both real close, and any issues we've had, we've taken care of. We take a lot of pride in putting things back better than what we found them. I hate to say we're gonna put it back as good because I'd rather put it back better than the way we found it, and then most of the time, there's no issues. With that comes, you can't make everybody happy, but I try my best to. That's what I'm here to do and to hope that they're satisfied. But I hope that you all have in my number and stuff, if you have a constituent or somebody that has a concern that you would reach out to me directly, and we can get to the bottom of it. But I hope they never reach out to you all. I hope that we've already taken care of that problem before. We will have a field superintendent on site every single day. Team Construction also has a field superintendent that's on site every day, too. And so a lot of the issues, if we run into a customer that's not happy, we've had to cross their driveway or sidewalk issue or just questions in general, usually they're headed off that way before. Tomorrow, we will start hanging our door tags. Every house on all these streets that will be affected will have a door tag placed on their door stating that we will be working in their area and that gas lines will be being replaced and serviced. And that's pretty much all I got, unless you got any questions. All right. So basically, it'll be when Locust Street ends is... It's hard to put a date because Locust Street will be the first job. But so these all have to be done in 2024, and our physical year runs from October 1 to October 1. So Locust Street will start October 1, and then the other... So Locust Street will start October the 1st, and then the other projects will fall in as we go along. But usually, we're done by the 1st of September. If I was guessing, I'd say the Locust Street job will take us till the 1st of the year, so it'd probably be after the 1st of the year before the Alton Road job. And then, the Alton Road job will also depend on what the railroad tells us we can and can't do, and when we can and can't do it, so.
Other questions?
None, I appreciate it.
I appreciate the heads up. I live on Hudson, and the first thing people are going to ask me is, when's it going to start, so now I can, I can tell them.
I mean, maybe, I thank you for the information, and maybe we can put that on the website, that you're all going to hang door tags so that people could under, you know, will know what it is, too.
Yep, we'll start that first thing tomorrow. We'll start hanging all the tags.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Thanks for having me.
We like that, no cost, right?
Yeah.
That's always better.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is banner requests from the AMVETS. You want to come back up?
Sorry about that.
That's all right, no.
Yeah, so, again, the AMVETS Car and Bike Show coming up on the 30th. Just a little background of what AMVETS is. AMVETS is a veteran service organization. Everybody's heard of the American Legion, everybody's heard of VFW. AMVETS is the only congressionally chartered veteran service organization. We are there to help out veterans, and that's what this car show is going to help us do, is raise money to provide the assistance for veterans. We have a post at 123 down there in front of Pioneer Playhouse. It is a safe haven for veterans to go in, it's a safe place to go, there's, we're all brothers and sisters in there, so, of course, we do outreach programs for veterans, we try to work with the community as well. This car show will be the first one that we've ever done. We're hoping that this is something we can continue to do and help out between the veterans and the city of Danville.
It's the 30th of September. Starting time is?
Starting time is 10 o'clock, supposed to run to about 5:00. It may run a little, little over, but I don't expect it to do such. And then from there...
At Millennium Park?
Yes, sir, at Millennium Park. That first big parking lot to the left as you enter the park is where the event's going to pretty much take place. So, of course, we have, the trophies are already in, the banner got fixed and came in this morning, so we've pretty much got everything that we need to run with it. We've been talking with Millennium Park and everything, so we, looks like we're pretty much on track to everything rolling.
Okay.
How many do you expect, how many participants?
It's kind of hard to say, being it's a brand-new car show. Talking around to a lot of the clubs that I've talked, that I've tried to get information from, because I like looking at cars, but don't give me a wrench. If we get 30, we'll be happy. It's kind of hard to say what we're going to get, usually up until about the week prior, because they want to know what the weather's going to be before they commit to anything. So, I've got three vehicles registered, and all of those, all those vehicles belong to people at AMVETS, so that's kind of like an internal registration, but we're solely pushing it out there. So it's free for spectators. If they want to vote on vehicles, because everything is pretty much going to be a people's choice, they want to vote on things, they can come, give donations, get tickets, vote on whatever vehicles they like, and then we'll give the awards out. Hopefully, it works out, and we continue to do this every year.
That sounds good.
So.
Could we, Chair, would like to entertain a motion to approve the banner request from the AMVETS?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? We hope the numbers increase, okay? But that's okay, got to start.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep. All those in favor of approving this banner request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Next item is the first reading of ordinance number 2022, a bond ordinance. Mr. RJ Palmer is here to present that. Madam Clerk, would you do the first reading of this for us before he presents?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky authorizing the sale and issuance of its general obligation public project bond anticipation note, series 2023, to provide interim financing for public projects of the city, authorizing designated officers of the city to provide for the sale and issuance of the note, providing for the payment and security of the note, and authorizing other actions with respect to the note and the public projects.
Thank you, ma'am.
Before RJ gets started, I was just going to give you guys a brief. This is what we're doing. I briefly mentioned this at our last meeting. We are working on several utility projects, large capital projects. All of these projects upgrade our capacity in a certain way to fund, for instance, a connection with Springfield, which we have an agreement for. In total, we are going to be issuing up to 6.5 million in bonds that will cover some specific utility fund projects.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the commission, and I think Ms. Compton did a very adequate job of explaining what we are going to accomplish with this interim financing, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Any questions from the commissions?
Three-year term, it says.
Three years.
Okay.
That's correct. So it's a, yeah, it's a three-year note that we would roll into bonds with presumably a little better interest rate in a few years down the road.
That's correct.
Okay. Now I understand, thank you.
And this is all for utility projects?
It's all utilities.
And the caveat with, with a little bit of a nuance is almost all of those are tied to new revenue.
Right.
Right. If you, if you read the sheet seven, you'll, you'll be able to note that in your minds. For example, the Perron Roads Phase 3, which is the connection, final connection to Springfield, and so all, all of those projects are more or less connected to new revenue, except for number two.
Which we could, I mean, these are good projects, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
You could say all of them.
That would answer the question, then, and why we want to go ahead and move on these projects sooner better than later.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, want to do a roll call vote, please?
I think we need a motion first.
Oh. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry. Well, somebody move. Oh, she read it, didn't she?
Phones, there it is.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance 2022.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Now, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Saris?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I had one more question. Sorry. I'm slow to the draw sometimes. With the new revenue, how long does it take for the new revenue to pay itself off? Is there an estimate or?
Not necessarily. The, for example, the number, item number three, the waterline project there, is the rate, the cost of that debt, for example, will be recovered by what they, the unit price for what they pay, literally, which it was in an original purchase contract. So you're, you're giving yourself three years to implement these, and then you'll be able to fully assess what that final cost is with inflation. It may, you know, up or down, we don't know. So it's, it's a short-term financing so that you can better understand your long-term need.
And will they be revenue bonds at that time, or just?
Could be.
Could be. Once we, once we take them permanent, with this, short-term note will be an obligation to the city, and then we can look at that for the long-term financing. And it becomes a, a cost analysis, right? Because the revenue bonds price a little higher than what your all's general obligation bonds will price. So oftentimes, to help alleviate that additional cost on the utility, the city will, will take that as a general obligation, knowing that the utility's paying it.
Right.
But it, it, it works to lower the rate in which they borrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Any other questions? Move along. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And I will second it since I was here.
Any questions, comments? Any corrections, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all. Next item is municipal order 0911012003. Mr. Bowe, you have the next four items.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just a really quick background on the fire employment contract. This was generated in response to recouping the city's investment in the time, training, and cost that it takes to equip a new firefighter recruit. In simple terms, this contract would be a three-year contract presented to a firefighter recruit for the cost associated with getting that person certified. If the firefighter leaves their employment within the first three years, the city would be in a position to recoup its training cost, which is estimated in the range of $23,750. And we're, you know, staff is recommending requesting approval of this contract for all firefighter recruits moving forward.
Questions or comments?
Is it prorated?
It is not prorated. It's a good question. This would be a full amount of training costs regardless of the timeframe that the firefighter would leave their employment. So whether they leave at one year or two years, the cost would be, would be the same to the firefighter. What we would do is this, this contract would be presented to the firefighter recruit along with their conditional offer of employment for them to review and accept the terms prior to agreeing to move forward with the city.
And if, and if I leave before the three years is up, who's responsible for paying this?
The firefighter would be responsible for paying that if they, on one, two primary conditions. One, they leave their employment, they go to another fire agency. A fire agency also has the right, similar to the police, if they chose to buy out the contract, so another agency could buy out the fee for recruitment of that firefighter to their, to their agency.
Did everybody understand that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. It's just safety.
I'll move to accept municipal order 0911012023.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Did you have a question? Oh, I thought you were leaving for them, sorry. Okay, next item, municipal order 022023, police employment contract.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is a revision to the existing police contract that's in effect for police officer recruits. Similar to a firefighter recruit, this is presented to a police officer recruit when an offer of employment's extended to them, along with all the terms and conditions. The primary changes here is, I think, take note on page three, paragraph six, is now it's, in past, we had collected wages and training costs. Now, due to some wage and hour provisions, the, you can only recruit cost of training and equipping that police officer, which is estimated to be in the range of $19,680. Same thing here, this individual contract would be for a three-year term. The difference here is not upon hire, it's three years from graduation from the police academy. It is also a, not a prorated amount, but also similar provisions exist that if the person leaves to go to another police agency, then the police agency that is hiring the individual could, you know, buy out the contract terms if they choose to do so.
Thank you, sir. Other comments or questions to Mr. Bowe? If not, we need a motion to approve the police employment contract?
I'll move to approve municipal order 0911022023.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of passing this police employment contract, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. Mr. Bowe?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
I'm like, my comrade down there. Randy, have we talked to the, I'm assuming we've talked to the chiefs and they're, they know this, and think it's a good idea or necessary?
Yeah, and I'll let Tony, if you want to kind of, yes, we've talked to both the chiefs, Doug, and I've talked, we've reviewed this with, you know, Sturgill Turner, who drafted the contract, and, you know.
It's not that uncommon, is it? I mean, a lot of, a lot of places do this.
They do, yes. Now, on the fire side, no, which is kind of a unique, I think, fire is trying to catch up to some of the challenges of police. Doug and I have talked about it, is, you know, firefighter recruitment is getting very difficult as well, and, you know, the city wants to recoup its investment with those firefighters, because you're spending a lot of time, effort, resources, to get the individual certified, and you want to be able to retain their services, because it is a challenging market, and it's a shrinking labor market, too. And so that's where I think it's appropriate, and we've all had discussions on this about continuing with this program.
Well, the fire department, now, they go to, do they go to an academy of sorts?
They do. It's still a pilot program. They ran one last year in the fall, they're going to have another one in February. It's, I think it's 16 weeks, like the police, they go on site, but it's not been an official designated academy like DLCJT, but it looks like it's trending that way. And so, you know, obviously, we're going to take, the city's going to take the time and effort to, just like we do with police, send those individuals to, to get trained. And then they're also going to spend a lot of time with our officers in-house training, you know, there's certain equipment, you know, we'll turn down gear, things like that, that some of it can be recycled, some of it can't. So when some, when a firefighter comes in and leaves, say, six months on the job, you know, the city's invested quite a bit into that individual to get them certified. And so, our goal is to, you know, to retain their services for that three-year period. But there are options. Again, all those options are going to be presented to the individual when you extend that offer of employment, so they're going to give them all the information upfront so they can make a good informed decision whether they want to move forward with, with the position.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Bowe, that's good information. You have the next item as well.
All right, Mayor. So kind of transitioning over, we've talked a little bit in recent weeks and months about a shortage of certified utility water operators. It's not just a city issue, it's a statewide issue. So part of that, myself and Marshall and all of our superintendents have been discussing ways to fast-track getting certified operators, because unfortunately, there's not a lot of lateral hires for operators out there right now in the state. So, long story short, is we, Kentucky Rule Water Association has established an apprenticeship program through the Department of Labor to help streamline getting operator trainees or licensed quicker. So what we're requesting is to enter into an agreement with the Rule Water Association, so anytime that we hire a new trainee, they will go through this program, which consists of 4,000 hours of on-the-job training over a two-year period, 288 hours of classroom instruction. The advantage of this is at the end of the two years, they're going to get a lot of resources, they'll be able to take their Class II license. Also, they're going to get a lot of resources on test-taking skills, guiding them through the program, and it's a way for us to, basically, in a nutshell, the workforce does not exist, it's trending that way. Right now, in the state of Kentucky, the average age of a water operator is between 50 and 55 years old, so you've got an aging workforce, you don't have a lot of new individuals coming into the field, so therefore, we've got to build that workforce, and this will do that. Now, as far as cost, there's no additional cost to the city to this, other than our general labor cost that we absorb anyway when we hire a trainee, but it's designed not to have that trainee linger for years to get certified. And we think it's a great program, all the superintendents have reviewed it. This, just a real quick update, is when you hire somebody, they'll be assigned a mentor, which would be a Class III or above water operator. That operator's going to do all their jo, on-the-job training, help them ensure that they get through their classroom training with Rule Water, and I think this sets the city up for future staffing, because we know we've got a, in the next one to, probably 12 to 18 months, we're going to see a lot of retirements coming, known retirements in water utilities, and it's critical that we continue to, to build a certified workforce. And this program will help us fast-track some of that. And this program will help us fast-track some of that.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve this apprenticeship program? We should be excited about?
Go ahead, go ahead, young lady.
No for approval.
Is there a second? Thank you all. Any other comments or questions about the Kentucky Rule Water Apprenticeship Agreement? 4,000 hours, wow.
And there's no cost to the city?
Uh, no, not to be part of the program, other than our normal labor costs that we would pay a trainee. It's really, uh, it's a great program that Rule Water has put together, and, because, you know, again, they, they recognize the issue. KLC is supportive of this apprenticeship program, which is actually how we got in contact with Rule Water, was through KLC, and, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging time right now, like I said, that you've got a major aging workforce problem in Kentucky with water utilities.
How are we going to get to the young people, the less seasoned people? Are we going to go to schools, job fairs, all the above?
Yep, so we've, uh, we've already been talking to the school systems about co-op programs, summer co-ops to get people exposed to water utilities, and this program is not just for, of course, you do have to be 18 years old to be part of the apprenticeship program. We've had a lot of conversations, and they're still developing, about marketing water utilities to, to high school students and college students. We've had conversations with BCTC about this as well. So, yeah, we've got to get out there, and we've got to market the industry, just to be honest, and we've got to give people exposure, because it's, it's one of those industries, I feel like, is, it's not really well-known. I mean, obviously, police, fire, some of your other services are really visible, but water utilities is not, and so that's kind of one of our next steps. And, uh, so we just, it's all about marketing, really, at the end of the day.
Do you tours with students?
Students do come do tours now, you know, Danville and Boyle County do get tours of our water, water plants, but, you know, we need to expand upon that, because it's not just the plants, we've got all of our people out in our meter shop, you know, water distribution, sewer rehab out in the field, so we need to take that and kind of expand on it. Not just high school, but college students, too, especially with those that are going through maybe an environmental science degree with BCTC, those are some of the ones that we want to target.
Yeah, so you'll be at the Fall Job Fair?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Great, September 23rd?
Uh, I think it's 28th.
Twenty, okay.
28th, yeah. And, you know, and, and part of that is we've got to continue to make sure, I know it's a conversation, that we have competitive wages, too, for those trainees, that's the other aspect of it, is continue to maintain competitiveness with other industries and employers. It's not a single answer, but all these things we're looking at holistically.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Are there any vote on this one?
Aye.
Aye.
If opposed, thank you. Mr. Bowles, the last one for you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, this is another program that we're working on with BCTC. It's a professional development program. We're really trying to build, and this is a, what we call a Danville City University for Staff. Couple of different, we're kind of looking at this in two different parts. One, we're looking at general training to help people enhance some of their soft skills like Word, Excel, communications, but we're also looking at a leadership component with, as we talk about, you know, I mentioned earlier, we've got a lot of looming retirements coming. One of the things we do is we've got a lot, we have great staff here. What we also need to do is establish platforms with them to build future leaders within the, within the city. This program's going to help us with that. We've met with BCTC, and we've created a, you know, a criteria of training that we want to be able to utilize, and the way we're going to set this up is classes, it's $200 per hour for training, all the training will be done onsite at the Danville campus, usually they're in four-hour blocks. This is going to allow managers, once we build this program, if approved, then the manager can say, you know, I see this employee as a future leader, they can go ahead and pick and choose from the classes that they want to have that person develop into. So it's just, we're really looking at this for succession planning, but also enhancing existing skills, like I mentioned, Microsoft Word, Excel, customer service, you know, conflict resolution, all these different things that we, our employees need those skillsets when interacting in their jobs. And we think this is a good program, and we're going to continue to tap into.
Stick a little diversity and inclusion in that training agreement, that'd be great.
Well, and actually, that one, and we're actually, we are using through our LMS, because we put in a new LMS system, so we have some of that going through our LMS, but yes, that's a good example, some things to add to that. And so, as far as the agreement here, you know, it shows total cost, but again, that just depends on, it's a $200 per hour, so it could be a very fluid situation, and we want to use that over time, and let the department managers, each department puts together their own training budget each year, so this will give them a platform to, to look at as they do their budgets for next year.
That, that's all exciting. Is there a motion for the BCTC training agreement?
I'll move to approve resolution 2023091102.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions?
On the second, is, is there a cap on the amount, because it looks like there is, on the contract?
It depends on how many classes, it's, you know, what we did is we started with 76 hours of training that we've identified, and so it's $200 an hour, but it'll depend on how many trainings you do with staff, and that's where it's going to just basically have a itinerary put together, and then, you know, managers will pick and choose what they want to send their staff through. So it's really just $200 per hour, but we've got 76 hours of course content that we build, and we'll continue to add to it and adjust over time as we see what, you know, is needed to be added or removed from the program.
Okay.
And each, each department will have, will take, use this as a part of their training budget.
Yes.
Slowly, yeah.
It's supposed to be this fiscal year.
And another thing we've talked about, and we haven't quite developed it, but we're going to try to do more like a, as people go through this university, when they hit certain milestones, meaning if, hey, if you get 30 hours, you're going to reach Level One certificate, 50 hours, Level Two, and then, you know, and so, so forth, so we're still going to build out some of this, but.
Well, it'd be, it might be neat if we could work it out to where they, excuse me, qualify for an associate's degree, where I'm taking all these classes, too, that would be a caveat, too.
Well, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because those are some of the conversations we've been having with BCTC, is given, some of this on-the-job training and professional development can go towards college, college course credit. It's not quite defined yet, but it's something that we have been talking towards, is, and, you know, we're trying to encourage staff to, to continue to tap into BCTC, because it's an excellent resource right in your backyard, they've got really good programs, they actually have a two-plus-two program with Eastern Kentucky, where you get your two-year associate's here, you can go straight into Eastern, all your credits transferred to get your bachelor's degree.
Outstanding, yeah. Do we approve that one? Do we vote on that one? Do we vote?
You need to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we move to the next.
May I ask a question?
You know you can, yes, ma'am.
Well, it's a Randy question, and I don't think it's quite this training, but since we're a service industry, how much training do our employees have with customer service, how to handle upset customers, how to ensure customer satisfaction? Because the most complaints I get from constituents are, somebody was rude to me, rather than just being quiet and listening. But I know they take a lot of abuse, you know?
And this is an area that we feel like, customer service is one of the areas that we need to expand on, and, you know, there's a, there is a needs there, and that's one of the reasons we're putting this together, because there is a need to expand on it.
So this includes customer service 101 and?
Customer service, conflict resolution, communication, written and verbal, we also have emotional intelligence as part of that, which ties into all those things when you're working through issues, and so we want to be able to get those tangible, intangible skills developed in the staff, no matter where, how many years somebody comes in with the experience, we can always continue to learn or get refreshers, and this will help us with some of that, too. And it's a, and again, this is new to us, so it's fluid, we're just building it, starting the foundation, we really are hoping to expand on it quite a bit.
And we do well, there's just always room for improvement. In the private sector, if you make someone mad, they don't come back, and here, there's no other choice, you know, but we still have to appreciate the customer, make sure they're, they're happy even when they're rude, so.
Yeah, and I think part of this is really just to kind of enhance that public servant mindset, and this will hopefully will help with some of that.
Well, Randy, I want, what I wanted to say is that in reading these four things that we're presenting tonight, the city of Danville is not looking for employees anymore, we're looking for folks who are career-minded. There's a lot of opportunity for advancement and further education and certification and X, Y, Z and everything else, and, and I know you PR that kind of stuff, but it's important for all of us to PR it as well. And then, to my fellow commissioners, we, we need to set the bar high on some of these things and say, we're going to sign up for some of these things ourselves, and say to the rest of the staff, it's just that important to us.
And, and I'll expand, and we didn't really talk about it here, I mentioned our learning management system, we've really invested in that as well, and that's, and so right now, we're doing monthly training topics through our LMS, which includes a big part of that safety, you know, we've actually gone through a lot of our diversity training through there, we're continuing to do monthly training, so we're getting, what we're also trying to do is build that platform to where employees are used to learning, and it becomes part of your overall routine each month, continue to learn.
I, I laugh and joke all the time, because I think about the five of us, and we seem very pleasant to each other when we're in these meetings, but there are times when we need some conflict resolution training as well. Jim Republicans know, we don't agree on everything all the time, we, we talk individually, we try to resolve things, and, so conflict management training is always high on my agenda to sign up for, because I, I create a lot of conflicts, so I want to be able to know how to resolve it as well, too. But thank you for, this is great, though, man, for the city of Danville to be moving in this avenue.
This program. This side of the table doesn't have any idea what you're talking about.
Well, that's because you, I saw you all at Land in Florida last week, right?
I get kicked down here.
Well, you show up and don't want to show your lunch, you know, that causes a conflict. Okay, let's go. But I really appreciate, this is really good, it was good, interesting reading, and, and my Browns won while I was reading some of it, how about that, you know, so. Oh, go Browns, sir. Okay, let's go along, come on. Our Christmas festival discussion, now I'm going to mess this all up, I'm going to call you Miss B, how about, Miss Bonafide, right? All right, Miss Ma'am. We ain't going to try that one. All right. All right.
Did you get to the baseball game?
I did, I got a great picture, he was playing shortstop, so I made it to the game. Hi there, for those that don't know me, I would like to introduce myself, I am Lahanna Bonagowski.
What?
Lahanna Bonagowski.
Bonagowski, okay, wow, all right.
I am a restaurateur here in Danville, and I am here to talk to you today about Christmas, though it is September, I think December will be here before we know it. I did give you a small packet of kind of what I wanted to go over, but I feel like before I do that, I should give you the, the actual why of why I'm here. Christmas is very important to me, and traditions in general. One of my all-time favorite traditions here in Danville is the Brass Band Festival. It is something we did growing up, and as soon as my own children were old enough, we took them to it. So, I wanted to be able to bring something to Danville to look forward to each year, like I did Brass Band Festival. What I'm proposing is a small Christmas festival entitled Danville Small Town Christmas. It is to be an all-ages, community-based event, and held downtown in Weisegger Park. This is to include music vendors, food trucks, attractions for kids, things of that sort. I am working very closely with the Christmas Parade Committee, actually, and, and the names kind of went hand-in-hand, because they're doing Danville Small Town Christmas Parade, and I wanted to do the program called Danville Small Town Christmas, so that worked out very well. One of my main focuses is just to bring ones from out of town to Danville. I was talking about my children, each year, my husband and I, we take them to Christmas events in Lexington and in Louisville, and finally, we were like, why don't we just do that here? So many people travel to do those things, but we have the space. So I would like to bring those here, and I've been working a lot behind the scenes with different ones from around the Danville and Boyle County community, bands and things like that from out of town, all the local artists, been working a lot with some small businesses here in the Danville Boyle County area, working with Boyle County itself, I actually am on the agenda for the fiscal court tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM as well. We had our meeting with the CVB, and they're agreeing to help us, and the rest of this I want to do through private sponsorships, and, and all of the comments that ones are making who I've told about this, they seem really receptive and excited to bring something like this to Boyle County.
Sounds interesting, sounds exciting. Timeframe, I know the dates, but what, what timeframe?
So I'm hoping that on Saturday, December the 2nd, that the program runs from 11:00 AM until 8:00 PM. And then, on Saturday, December the 9th, that's something, working with the Christmas Parade, it would, my small-town program would begin at 11:00 AM, and then it would wrap up right as we're rolling into that Christmas Parade.
So the Christmas Parade is the 9th? I didn't know that, okay.
I thought it was the 2nd.
So your ask, your ask for us is 6,000, which is what you're asking the county for?
Yes, my ask is from the city and the county, both at $6,000. I've done a lot of research from different vendors and tried to come up with the best price possible, and so listed under there is what exactly that money will go towards to put this program on.
When you need to know ASAP, I know, but when?
It is kind of one of those situations, I have been working with the vendors, and they know that I had to wait to be on the agenda and things of that sort, and so it's, it is a sooner rather than later thing, but I do have some wiggle room.
I appreciate the whole page of private sponsorships, because my constituents always want that first, and I also appreciate that you already went to the CVB and obtained funds, and then the remainder is just a split between city-county, so, yeah, I'd like to hear maybe what the city manager recommends, or see what the county says, but what do you guys think?
To her credit, we, we've been talking about it, what, for a couple of months or?
Yeah, probably the end of July is when this began.
Yeah, or sooner, really.
Yeah.
Maybe even in June, but, so, so we, we had anticipated a request of some money, the $6,000 is, is well within where we spent last year on, in the Christmas season on various things, and so this is more of a focused effort and, and coordinated, and it's something that I think you could ultimately do if you so choose, and, and be affordable in our existing budget of the legislative executive.
Okay. So, it would be appropriate if I made a motion now?
Let me ask another question first, if you don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
She mentioned working with the Christians Parade Committee, but, I don't know who's in charge, but there's always been a committee that sort of decorated downtown for the Christmas holidays and the season, whatever.
Yeah, so beautification works on that, our Christmas Parade folks work on that, and so really, what she's asking is not necessarily to give the money to an organization, what we would do is Melanie would be permitted, and Melanie's welcome to speak if she'd want, I told her she may get called on, but we, we would be dealing with the vendors directly that, that is providing the service identified under that, that list, so we'll, we'll be working directly to those vendors and coordinate the schedule with them.
But all these other groups are, what's going on?
You're right.
Yes, I actually sat down with the, the head of the Christmas Parade Committee, Jamie Votal, and then Janet Hamner and the ones who are decorating as well, and we are all trying to work really closely together.
Yeah, Janet works through the Beautification Committee of the city, and, and so really, it's a coordinated effort, and, you know, Josh and Melanie have been involved.
So we also, in talking to Lahanna, would like to do the tree lighting, as like the thing that happens on the 2nd, and then on the 9th would be the thing that happens on the 9th. So, this is really going to be a community thing, it's things that people are already looking for, they're already asking when this is the tree lighting, and it is only September, so this would just be kind of a marriage of that, and really making it a place that people want to come to during the Christmas season.
Some of the things we've talked a lot about is, is decorating better. We want, we, we would like to decorate for the season with more intention, you know, for example, during the fall, we would love Weisegger Park to have a little bit more seasonal decorations to it, right, to complement the season, where, so in the spring, 4th of July, we probably need to display some American flags better, or maybe have a season or holiday-appropriate decorations, and so this is a step in that. better, or maybe have a season or holiday-appropriate decorations, and so this is a step in that direction as well.
Could some of these things be in kind, I mean, like tables and chairs?
We will constantly look for those opportunities as.
Instead of paying for them, I'm saying on here, could we?
There will be a lot of other services, so like, for example, when the Bourbon Chase comes through, there's always things we do that we don't account, that we didn't anticipate as it comes up, and so I would argue that some of these things we may do in-house and some of them, but committing to the program is what we would like permission to do.
So more of a?
Not to exceed number?
Yeah, an up to amount.
Correct, right.
And we can provide the extra police presence and such already?
Normally during those events downtown, we do that anyway, and so we would just focus, go into it acknowledging that this event's coming.
LaHannah, does any of your plans involve closing the street, is it, or did?
On the 2nd, that is something that I would like to do. I have spoken with Chief Gray a little bit about it, but it's kind of a working document right now, and I'm going to do whatever they allow me to do, obviously, and I know that for traffic flow and for the public and things like that, I wouldn't be able to do that until later on in the day. So speaking to my vendors, some of the bigger attractions, I have a tentative map, and some of those things won't come into play until 5:00 PM.
And it also looks like you're going to get 11 private sponsors, and you've already gotten three?
So I do already have three.
Great, thank you.
And then I have about four more who have said yes, we just got to put the pieces in.
Okay, thank you.
And you're talking about the sponsors during the attractions, is that what you're saying, you say 11 sponsors?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So that would not be something the city would ask to do? No, no.
Although we could take on, I could sponsor the cookie table.
You can hand out cookies with a little hat.
So you've been in contact with Earl, have you been in, have you talked to anybody at the county? Have you?
Yes, ma'am, I have. Trilly and I have spoken one-on-one, and tomorrow I'm going before the fiscal court, and I've also spoken all with Jason Cullen.
And you're requesting $6,000 from both governments or $6,000 total?
$6,000 from both.
Is any of that in kind or can be in kind?
I'm sure that is something we could look into.
Yeah, we'll look for those opportunities as it passes. So like Kevin said, this is really what we would perceive as the top line, not to exceed for us, for the city.
Right, because some of the things on this list that the city might already have.
Correct.
So that would be less, okay.
I'm all for this, but again, it's the city being asked first. I sure would like to know what my good old friends up on the other corner would do with this, because it's a Boyle County event, but it's titled Downtown Danville, you know, and so I'm all for it, but I'd like to suggest that we table it and our decision and let her come back and show us what some other folks are willing to do.
Yeah, I think we all really appreciate the passion and want to go forward, but there's always that question is if we're going to give you six and Boyle says, I don't know, we can't afford it, feels a little lopsided to us.
Well, I don't know, that's happened before and will happen again. I, you know, I think we need to take it, everything on its own merit, and I think this, I think there's been a hole at Christmas time, you know, downtown or in Danville generally, that this will attempt to fill and will eventually, I think, grow and be even better, but so my preference would be to do it, approve it, but if nobody else does, then I'm not going to, I'll wait, it's fine.
Just because she did her due diligence, I see right now by money amount that already the CVB gave, correct? And I see that we have seven private sponsors, so I feel like we already have more coverage even than what we're being asked, so I'm.
We don't have the private sponsors yet.
She has seven out of the 11.
I do have three confirmed and four more.
Yeah.
Yes.
So yeah, I'm fine either way.
I am too, I'm not opposed to this, I just, again, we don't have 10x on the agenda tonight. You know, that's, you got those folks waiting, this will be the second and third meeting, they have to wait, and hopefully we'll get that resolved pretty soon, we don't want to get this resolved pretty soon, but.
So bring them both back.
I guess we got to leave a message. This is great. It's really going to be celebrating my birthday, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I think there's a favorable feeling up here, is two weeks going to set you back, any?
No, I can reach back out to the vendors tomorrow and make sure that they haven't already reserved these things.
Yeah. Because you've got the 25 vendors on the event rate from the CVB, and then if you get five, six, three, whatever from the county, you have a little update to figure out what kind of purchase you're going to get, which I hope you kind of will give more than six. Mike was off the wall. Okay, no, I'm just kidding. It's very important that we do these kinds of things, and I want to be considerate. And then again, if these are going to become annual things, then we've got to have these things come to us at the right process, at the right time, so we go through the right process, because, I don't know, all right.
I'll make a motion to table.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, no. All right, we got, so we got two and two, right? Two say table, and two say don't table. So the motion, the motion carries, I vote the table.
What if, if we find out tomorrow what the county did, we're all going to see each other at one, I don't know if it's a real meeting. Okay, you can't put it on as, okay, never mind.
I think it's very obvious, she feels good about what we discussed tonight, and she feels real good about us going to give her some money. Bad thing about us meeting on Mondays and them meeting on Tuesdays or Wednesdays, I'm just, get past that, okay. We support you, just want to table it and wait.
That sounds good, thank you.
All right. Chamber of Commerce, too, what do you think? All right, thank you all. Next item on the agenda is to hear the public, and this is where we hear from the public, we listen to the public about things that are not on our agenda for tonight. So is anyone from the public desiring to speak to us tonight about things, about anything, really? All right, thank you. Commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments, announcements?
Dana, ladies first.
I was just going to say, the fountain downtown looks nice. It really looks nice at night, all lit up. Wish the back fountain, you could see better, you know.
That was lit before.
It's sort of like, not there.
Yeah, that was lit before, but what we are going to do is look at the existing lights that are now 10 years old almost, make sure that we can convert, see if we can convert those to LED so that there are a little bit more uniformity in the coloring, and so that would include the lights. We did have lights up there one time, but those will be compliment, they'll be the same, hopefully.
And the water well, you speak of the water well.
And the water well, right.
The water well.
Yeah, the fountain looks great, and people were taking pictures this weekend, the kids and.
Yeah, the light, what I noticed was the difference in light colors, it could be better, so converting those to LED would help.
I was just going to say, welcome back to the city manager, he's a stuntman in our time, and.
Thankful to be here.
He did give that up.
Thankful to be here, to be honest.
Mr. Earl, can I say something? When you're coming down Main Street, turning right on South Second, and that curve is too far out, and that lane is too smart, I told the contractor.
Ms. Calhoun, if you want to speak to us, come to the podium, because we went, all right, we went, see, we, all right, we went past that, and then we were on with Commissioner's comments, and I.
I want to say.
Okay, well, next time I raise your hand, I'll, we'll recognize you, but don't holler out like that.
I want to say kudos to Michael Paris with Brass Band Festival, Chamber and CVB, the downtown beat has been very successful and a good thing for downtown. I think we had a couple of commissioners right there at the square, I was kind of out on the street, and the restaurants were being favored as well, so it's a congratulations to you. And I have two more things, and then I'll yield the mic to anybody else, and I would ask, in the absence of Josh Morgan, if, to the city manager, if we can get an update sometime along the line on signage and downtown, downtown street paving, I think that was scheduled for next week, and I think we're all kind of want to know what's going on there.
Yeah, I don't have an update on the signage, I know this street paving is still on schedule, as far as I understand.
September?
In the next, in the, yes, the end of this month, I think is what the plan was.
That was, I was going to ask that, but you can ask Josh, I mean, like, we approved a paving list in May, has any of that been paved, or do you know?
Some of it has, yeah, but not very much.
Okay. Is that like an Allen Company thing?
Yeah, so normally, because we get a favorable pricing here in Boyle County, because we just do, because they're stationed here, we have never really, we've allowed them to schedule that as their crews come in and come and go.
Okay.
Right. It usually works out pretty good, we don't, we usually publish it early before paving season ends, and then they work that in their schedule.
And the state did, what, Maple Avenue, north side of Maple Avenue?
They did some work there.
Yeah, did pretty good, yeah. Constitution Square Festival is this coming weekend, 5K Run is Sunday, and the festival asserted it. Okay, then, I'm just going to say this one word, and I'm just going to leave it alone. Spectrum is getting a lot of our citizens' attention here lately, so, I don't know what we can do about it, but we're getting lots of attention from folks about Spectrum. They all sat down and watched the UK football game, and boom, it wasn't, okay, let's go on. Any other quick commissioner comments?
Yep, I wanted to thank staff for cleaning up the mud on the new tennis courts, seems like that happens a lot when it rains, so I don't know why. I wanted to thank staff for going above and beyond while the city manager's been out, so well done, and I wanted to state, thank staff for recognizing our employees coming up September 15th, because I'm sure that's going to be a lot of work, so thank you for holding that and thanking, thanking our loyal employees, that's always important.
Yes, ma'am. Other comments? Okay, thank you all, let's move along then. We'll pass that, Ms. Calvin, what's your question or comment?
You say it, come here.
Yeah, but we, see, you got to do that, we get to hear the public, and our agenda is the time you got to do that.
I got a promo.
You got what?
No.
Okay, why don't you see, city manager after meetings, share with him, because we got to, we're trying to follow some protocol here and stay on our agenda, okay, sweetheart? Okay, let's go on then. Item number 12 is payment of bills, the financial section. Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $758,097.03.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there, there is a second, are there any questions or comments? Any questions about the bills?
I just have one, just because the, it's water utilities, I believe, but it's like, the S4 water cells and service, just so I can, GAC rehab.
That's a new expense, that, where we have granular activated carbon, we have to, you clean that carbon, it's easiest way to say it. So it's called, you know, the SK, that's the contractor that, that we have, we solicited annually, we do a solicitation, that's the contractor that, the vendor that does that work, so they take the carbon out of the filters, they burn it to purify it, and then they reinstall it. It's a significant expense, but it's tied to, so instead of buying powder activated carbon and wasting it in the waste stream, we use a replaceable, rebuildable filter bed of that media, that's the company that does that.
Okay.
Does that help you?
Yeah, and then the other one was Spectrum, I know it's probably, is that, that's phone and internet. On the franchise agreement, do they not provide internet to our, all of the places?
Nick worked through that, and that's, I can't remember the detail, but probably what I should do is have him address that for you at the next meeting, so that it's a little more clear. I know that he's gone through a significant process with them, and so I'll wait, wait for him to answer that, I can't recall the detail.
My quick memory on that, Commissioner, is that they did provide us, the franchise agreement provide a certain number of connections, but the city greatly exceeds that to a large extent in multiple locations, so I think, for instance, at City Hall, that is accurate, or we maybe had two points of access or some, I don't remember.
I can't remember the detail.
Quite some time since we negotiated that, but there was, there were some free points given.
Okay.
Other questions?
It's a real minor charge, but it got my curiosity, and Lee can probably answer this real quickly. Blake Buck anesthesia, what, what are we doing with that service?
That one is a, so they overpaid in payroll withholdings on their occupational tax, and so that's just a refund.
That name is a little deceiving, you know?
Yeah.
Coming from my background, I'm like.
It's just a refund, it'll probably go to a specific employee that doesn't work in city limits, so that's what that is.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions? If not, all those in favor of paying the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Last item on our prepared agenda is Resolution 2023-09-11-03, the Fourth Street Right-of-Way acquisition.
Thank you, Mayor, while I'm not Josh Morgan, I'm happy to take this item for him. This, this resolution approves two easements that are on North Fourth Street, they are identified as properties owned by SMC Properties and Cricket Hill Properties, commonly referred to as the Sherwin-Williams parking lot and Sherwin-Williams, and then the subway building. The easements, if you flip about five pages into your packet, there is a diagram that reveals on the boundary survey, a hatched area that indicates the two parcels on each plat, one of which is being formally dedicated as right-of-way to the city, and the other being retained by the owner, but allowing a temporary construction easement and use of ingress and egress for the city to build the sidewalk there that will be contemporaneous with the streetscape project to the edge of the subway building.
Okay. Any questions to that? I like the way you explained the location of it. Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2023-09-11-03.
Thank you, ma'am, was there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? I'm just excited to see this, because I know it's been an ongoing discussion and dialogue, so thanks to staff for getting this accomplished, okay? Are those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Before we entertain a motion for adjournment, brother and sister Weathers are present. Can I get you to have a conversation with them about what we're doing?
Yeah, I know, I know, I was going to catch them since they were here right after the meeting, I know I've got to get with them, and I will do that, yeah.
All right.
And then we do need an executive session for property acquisition and personnel.
So the Chair would entertain a motion, I was going to get them one out of here. Kevin, you let me down. Is there a motion?
Yep, I'll make.
Executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session regarding potential real property acquisition for which publicity at present stage might or would be likely to affect the value per KRS 618101B.
Second.
And personnel? Which, which one?
First one.
1F.
Which one?
This is the first one.
And I also make a motion to go on the executive session, discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 618101F.
Second.
Thank you all. If I don't create a motion, they don't get, oh, I'm, I wouldn't do the, all those in favor go to the executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Five minutes, five minutes or less?
Yeah, okay.
You all will be back in regular session. City manager?
Staff is asking you that you accept the resignation of three police officers, Austin Ray, Dakota Rakes and Cody Crawford.
Can we do it with one motion?
Do those with one motion please.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion regretfully?
I will make that motion regretfully.
Thank you sir. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Different non-police officer, we would ask that you accept the resignation of Nina Wesley from code enforcement officer.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say yea or say nay, whatever, right? Next item.
Staff is requesting or recommending the hiring of Andy Ferguson to the position of police officer.
Wow, okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you all. All those in favor of this hire say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Thank you all. Chair would entertain a motion to go back into executive session?
I make a motion adjourned.
Yeah, okay. He was listening, weren't you? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Good meeting guys.